Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's City Council Regular Meeting for Monday, March 3rd. We have just one item for tonight regarding the study session. We have Director of Community Development Brad Power, Chief Redevelopment Officer Dan Perumba, and Representatives from New Inglewood LLC here to request for an expedited termination of the city center ground lease on the former Wine Garden property and the related title transfer to New Inglewood LLC. So, Dan, do you want to kick us off?
Oh, yeah. There's a star now. Mayor Protem, Council members, thank you for taking time tonight for this topic. I'll introduce you to Stu Ogilvy, the President of Ogilvy Partners, who will introduce the balance of their joint venture team that includes not only his company but DPC Companies, their partner. And just a couple of quick things. I did want to clarify, on the agenda, it states that Brad and I are here to seek direction and actually request expedited termination of the city center ground lease on the former Wine Garden property. And in our council memo, we tried very specifically to be neutral on this and to provide pros and cons. So, we are not specifically recommending this. We thought we were at a point where it was really up to council to consider the pros and cons and have the discussion with New Inglewood LLC, both tonight and if appropriate, then in a study session next week for specific direction and any follow-up conversation. And simply, the matter under consideration is whether the ground lease termination ought to be expedited, and that would be combined with a transfer of the title to New Inglewood. You may recall that over the past few years, every time we've discussed this matter, we've always talked about the ground lease termination and a redevelopment agreement going hand-in-hand as being something that council would process and approve together. But for reasons that they'll address, New Inglewood really sees the benefits of expediting the lease termination and title transfer, and then let the ground lease, let the redevelopment agreement occur later after they, working with staff, and council have had additional time to work out all the details of redevelopment. And with that, I'll turn it over to Stu Ogilvy. Stu?
Thank you, Dan. Appreciate it. Thank you, members of the City Council, for allowing us to introduce ourselves and our vision for Inglewood City Center. My name is Stu Ogilvy. I'm President of Ogilvy Partners. First, I will introduce you to Ogilvy Partners and one of our private-public projects within the city of Inglewood. Then Chris King, CEO of DPC, will introduce you to DPC and one of their private-public projects. Lastly, one of our partners, Dustin Jones, will speak about our vision for the future of Inglewood City Center. Tony Kill here is also here with DPC, who is a Vice President of Projects for DPC. Ogilvy was founded in 1995. We are in our 30th year. We have invested in land, retail, multifamily, and office, and specialize in repositioning real estate to its highest investment use. We formed a joint partnership with DPC, who also specializes in repositioning real estate. As I said, Chris King, the CEO of DPC, will speak next about their company. This is a super team that has a long history of performance in all kinds of projects and in private-public partnerships. One of the projects we repositioned and collaborated with stakeholders was the two-building headquarters of Sports Authority across the street from the city center. At purchase, the two buildings were vacant due to the bankruptcy of Sports Authority. Those buildings totaled 215,000 square feet on 15 acres. We secured the climbing gym, Earth Treks, on 50% of the south building for a 15-year lease. The remaining space was converted into industrial. We secured three more tenants on long-term leases after this renovation. At the same time, we converted the north building, which was empty, into a 900-unit self-storage building. Within 30 months, we had that leased to 90%. What that left was 4.5 acres of excess parking that was not necessary for the project. After a lengthy collaboration process with stakeholders, including the Inglewood community, Inglewood Chamber of Commerce, Inglewood City staff, and Inglewood City Council, the site was approved for new development of 300 apartments that are now open for lease. This was one of many of our successes in repositioning real estate properly through good vision and correct allocation of capital. With that, I will turn it over to Chris King of DPC. Thank you.
Thank you, Stu, and thank you for your time tonight to hear us out a little bit. Stu said, "I'm DPC Companies. I'm the President and CEO of the firm. We've been around since 1986." Stu and I have been personal friends. We were just talking, I think, for almost 35 years. Started out as young people in the business and kind of had a kinship. We rose up together and both ended up owning our companies. We're very similar in our operations, and that's a little bit how this joint venture came to be. We very much like to work with hard properties that need to be positioned, repositioned, kind of heavylift kind of opportunities. And we are, you know, well-versed in retail, industrial office, multifamily, self-storage. And we've done, you know, so many projects, it's hard to put a number anymore. I'd say the most germane project to this that was extremely interesting and, you know, spent a number of years on was the Cherry Creek Corporate redevelopment right at Colorado Boulevard, Cherry Creek Drive in Glendale, which is right across the street from the now-being-open park area that they were calling it Glendale 180. I think that's changed now. We will work very closely with the city to, we purchased four office buildings, and then we had quite a bit of excess ground. And the city has been desirous for almost 15 years of turning the park across the street into a viable mixed-use development. And we're a significant portion to make that plan happen because we own so much ground across the street. And so, we work with the city of Glendale to work to buy adjacent properties. For instance, right across the street from the rugby stadium, a rugby field, there was a burned-out apartment building that they were at odds with, with the former owner, and they couldn't get anything done. We bought that from the former owner. We tore it down. We lighted it, paved it, striped it, and we donated that to the city that they use to this day for parking for their field. And what they did in return for us is they rezoned where that red area is on that plan for multifamily. So, we had our office buildings. The multifamily got redeveloped. We partnered with another multifamily developer to do that. That's there today. It's a very significant or very successful property. And then we built a parking deck in between all of that so that the city had excess parking for their park, the multifamily had parking, some rollover for them, and then the office buildings had it. So, it was complex. We had, you know, TIF financing in place, very sophisticated capital structure, where we had some sales tax cooperation. We had a bond district. We floated bonds. And we got there, like I say, probably in about, Tony was on that with me in four years. Was that, you know? And to this day, it's very successful. It looks nice. We're extremely proud of it. We've done other partnership workings with City of Fort Collins. We're on one right now with Commerce City. I live about 10 minutes from this site. So does Tony. Our office is in the tech center, so we're very, very local. I grew up here. So, we're excited and pleased to be working with you all. And I think, I would just leave it, you are a listen-first kind of company. We care very much what you want and need and what your constituents want and need in the city. So, you know, we have flexibilities to, we've got a big, really well-located site here that has so much potential. So, we'd really like to work with you all to get a game plan that, you know, we're not going to try to do this in two years. It's a master plan development. We understand that. So, that's the spirit in which we come.
All right. Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Members of Council. You know, really, Chris touched on this a little bit, but since we acquired the site in December, what we've really been up to is listening. We've been doing a lot of, having a lot of conversations with various organizations in the community, trying to learn about the history of the site, although we certainly had a head start on it, as well as the different opinions and stakeholder positions out there. We have ways to go, but it's clear that there's been a significant amount of work over the past several years developing a very well-thought-out plan. And we want to dust this process off and really take advantage of the work that's been done using the great base that you guys have done and created to start with. So, we've done a couple of things since we purchased the site, although it's been a short timeline here. We engaged dig architects who had done some previous work, I think for the city or the previous developer, and really asked them just to, rather than do a full layout at this point, just kind of start thinking through kind of high level what this thing could look like. And to be candid, we didn't really pay attention to anything west of INCA for this exercise. We had them focus primarily on C1, C2. And one of the interesting things that they came up with, if this were to become multifamily, is, you know, you've probably seen the previous versions of this site plan had everything oriented east-west rather than north-south. And what this fairly simple modification that was suggested does is it creates direct line of sight and visibility from Hampden to the potential ground floor retail. That's a, it may seem like a pretty simple change, but it actually has a pretty big impact, I think, for what the site could become. So, those are the, you know, some of the things we've been doing is looking at things like that, just what this could look like, that candidly has been, you know, very, very exciting. The other thing we had them do is really envision, how do we reactivate this, this entire area? I think, you know, everyone's aware that, you know, given the current occupancy, there's certainly challenges out there. And one of the key, I think, factors in going forward is going to be, how do we make sure that this space is utilized and activated as much of the time as possible? And so, here's just some concepts that they've come up with, you know, taking from other developments that have been successful, but things like an ice rink in the winter, or, you know, shade structures, garden areas, you know, play areas, open community beer gardens, you know, food trucks. I know that you guys have the concert series in the park right now. But these are certainly all things we want to draw on throughout this process. They talked a little bit about, you know, what can we do to incorporate art, light elements, water features, water play areas, which I'm sure, you know, many of you have seen in other successful redevelopments as well. So, you know, we've gotten a good start on it certainly, but there's a long way to go. And I think the, as Dan mentioned, the path forward is, you know, we're asking for a termination of the ground lease, which would really allow us to get started. To start this path is very time-consuming. It's very expensive. And there's a very lengthy list of tasks that need to be accomplished in order to actually see dirt moving. So, now, the question is, you know, why? And I think it's obviously a fair question, and I think there's three elements to this. The first one is, you know, timing. Why do we want to do it now? The second is that we've heard from previous conversations, what's the value that the city would be getting? And then the last piece is how are our interests aligned? Why can you trust that we're going to perform if the land lease is terminated? So, let's talk a little bit about timing. I think, you know, we talked a little bit about how this process is certainly, you know, very expensive and time-consuming. And candidly, it's just not, we're not at a point where we'd be willing to reinvest that kind of capital today without the understanding uncertainty that we're going to have an agreement to terminate the ground lease and transfer that, that real property. So, that's kind of piece one. The second piece is, you know, as we look at, okay, well, what happens if this isn't an option? What's our option at that point? And I think the reality is, we would lease it up, lease up the existing vacant space. There's about 50 years left on the ground lease. And based on our purchase price, we would just cash flow for 30 years. Now, with a land lease, when you have 50 years left, usually your last 20 years, it's going to be very difficult to support additional capital investment, attract tenants, things like that. So, candidly, you probably spend the last 20 years with it, you know, becoming more vacant and less taken care of. The next piece of the why now is certainly City Council. I think there's been so much time invested in creating the plan that's in place right now that it seems like it would be advantageous to utilize all that work that's been done and the background that this council has, as opposed to waiting until, you know, we do all this work planning for another agreement, and then we have a whole new council that wants a new set of rules. So, that's one of our other considerations on timing. The next piece is, you know, really wanting to see this transform sooner rather than later. There's clearly security issues and in addition to physical property challenges of just a property that's 30% occupied. So, we want to kind of change the direction there and start, you know, reinvigorating this area rather than just seeing it continue to deteriorate. We talked a little bit about, you know, the economics of it, obviously, moving sooner rather than later of, you know, turning something that's candidly costing money right now into something that can start generating a positive impact to the community. All right. So, the value proposition is really a couple of components. One is, you know, in looking at what that land lease is worth, and we've had a lot of discussions about how do you value a land lease? And the reality is that the land lease is completely prepaid, so there's no income to the city on an ongoing basis there. Is there value in it when it expires? Sure. That's not for 50 years. And I think today, you know, there's not much value in that. And as I mentioned, over time, if you let land leases get closer to their expiration period, that can be a challenge to continue to support and justify reinvestment as you get closer to that expiration. So, one of the next pieces, and I think the largest piece, is what we're willing to give up in order to terminate the ground lease. And, you know, our estimates are about $20 million worth of real estate that we have that we're proposing to give the city in exchange for this. The 24-hour fitness building, the ground floor, we call it the ground floor condominium retail, as well as a purchase option on the Tokyo Joe's. The first two would certainly, well, actually, all three of these scenarios really allows the city to control its destiny on the west side of the INCA if for some reason, the city decides to go another direction down the road rather than have us be the master redeveloper. So, in addition to that, the other thing that we've proposed, that's a, you know, a fairly tangible give on our part, is we have agreed not to lease any of the retail space for, to any retailers that would preclude the redevelopment for a period of two years while we work through all of the items and the objectives to make sure we can actually break ground on some of the redevelopment. And so, what's that worth? It certainly, you know, you can back into it a number of ways, but candidly, if you lease the remaining vacant space, it's over $2 million a year of revenue that we would be giving up in order to do that. And then the last piece is really talking about, you know, how we're committed to this. I think, at the end of the day, we want to see redevelopment occur, and we want to see it occur as quickly as reasonable. 2026 may seem, you know, a little ambitious at this point, and it certainly could be, but it's not impossible. And I think there's an opportunity to see that happen by some point in 2026, which could be exciting and is really exciting from our standpoint. We, as I've kept mentioning, once upon termination, we would start spending a pretty significant amount of money on consultants working through the agreements on your screen, which take attorneys, engineers, architects, and all sorts of consultants to start developing those, that process, and working with the community to finalize the master plan. The next piece is really, you know, our vision is to create a legacy project here. I'm a third-generation Coloradan. My grandmother graduated from Inglewood High School. We're all native. So, I think, you know, seeing something that we're proud of ultimately is a critical component for us as well. And, you know, the other piece that really ties us to the site and this redevelopment plan is the fact that, you know, although it's feasible and it's financially attainable for us to lease everything as is, it's still more attractive for redevelopment. So, we're committed to seeing a redevelopment through and want to see what will work for the community. With that, I will open it up to questions.
All right. Mr. Jones, Mr. Ogilvy, thank you very much for the presentation. You know, we've been talking about this for a few years now in terms of the redevelopment. So, this hasn't always been the most popular option, so I'm sure some of our council members will ask a couple of questions regarding this current plan. But I also wanted to, just for members of the community that are listening at home, I just wanted to, you know, you know, the expedited termination could have a different definition for many. So, there will be no decision tonight in terms of the actual transfer tonight, but we are looking to have an executive session next Monday night to talk about this specifically. But tonight, I think we wanted to just get a little bit more clarity about your plan and what this may mean for Inglewood. So, I just wanted to let those online know as well. All right. So, any questions for Members of Council? Go ahead, Member Ward.
I'm going to start with what I think is the lowest-hanging fruit. The Tokyo Joe's building, why are you offering to sell that to us instead of including it with the 24-hour fitness building?
Well, for a couple of reasons. I think the value that we think that we're giving the city is in excess of the ground lease, the value of the ground lease termination. So, ultimately, we would, you know, today, it's worth something, and we would offer a purchase option. Ultimately, our desire is to be the master redeveloper of everything so that the city would never even need to purchase it. But that's how we're thinking about it.
Okay.
Member Noonan Camp?
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you for the presentation. It's nice to meet you for the first time. It feels like this is the long-time coming, which we're really excited to see your plans. Speaking of the plan, the concept plan, the one that is in the presentation, is this officially your concept plan? Is this what you would like to see? Can you help us understand? Is this illustrative? How seriously should we be taking something like this at this point?
Yeah. I think it's a plan that we took from what had already been done, and we did one very small tweak to it. So, we have not developed the plan. I think, you know, as we've had conversations today, and there's many more to have, we'd want to understand from all the stakeholders, community, and everyone else, does this meet the needs of what Inglewood is looking for? And so, I think that would be a process that we'd still have to go through. This was more illustrative in nature to primarily demonstrate the reorientation of buildings and just that we're starting to think about that.
That's helpful. You mentioned the pros and the cons and your desire for the ground lease to be terminated on an expedited timeline. What is expedited to you, and what is a timeline that you are asking for specifically?
Sure. I think the term expedited is really tied to just, ideally, it would be complete before we end up with a different council, is really what we're trying to accomplish there. So, I think, does that answer your question?
It does. It does. And then just one more, and then I'll pass it to my colleagues. And then just one more and then I'll pass it to my colleagues. As I'm sure you can imagine, and if you've been following this project or this conversation in our community for the last several years, we have a lot of feelings about this place. This, this site has a lot of history for our community and we have put a lot of time and effort with our community partners into thinking about what is the future for this site that actually feels like our community, it feels like Inglewood. And so handing over the property without kind of assurances of a shared vision feels probably a little bit scary and probably some of our community members are asking that question. How do you plan to approach or some of those concerns that we might have around, what guarantees are you maybe open to providing around partnership or collaboration around the actual design of the site and the purpose that it serves for the community?
Sure. Well, I think first and foremost, I think there's a piece of this that is impacted by, by this decision that we're asking y'all to make, which is C1, C2. Everything west of INCA, I think the way we're proposing it is that the city would still control ultimately the, the destiny of that. That's a carrot for us. That also gives us an opportunity to prove ourselves that we are going to be able to deliver something that the community is going to support so that we are engaged to do the west side as well. So that would be, you know, one area. I think, you know, monetarily, we're certainly committing a lot of capital to the redevelopment. And I think that's a, you know, a pretty strong sign of, of faith as well as, you know, direct capital from the value of the assets.
Helpful, thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, gentlemen. Good to have you here. Appreciate your thoughtfulness and putting together, you know, the site plan and, and the ideas you have moving forward, moving forward with this. My question is around something, something you said in the presentation was that you're committed to not, you know, not leasing anything out for, for the next two years. I think, you know, the, the transactional element of this, where we get some properties and release the ground lease is, is one important element. But another thing is that, and I think a more important thing to me, and I think a lot of city councils, is that we, if we, if we release this ground lease, we want to see the redevelopment. That's the, the main thing that would happen. If something was to come up where the mark, you know, the market wasn't right or you couldn't get, you know, the funding you needed to pull off the project, in two years, you decide you're going to go lease all this up again, what, you know, what recourse would we have under this scenario to try to, you know, get, get back to ground, you know, ground zero and rethink a process to move forward to redevelopment? I think something that a lot of citizens out there would, you know, they would read that as kind of a, you know, failure of, of launching this project. And I'd really like to make sure that, you know, that doesn't happen.
That's, that's a fair question. I think, again, I, I think it's important to bifurcate the, the west of INCA versus east of INCA. In that, in that case, the west of INCA could still have a different life. However, that said, there'd be a significant amount of capital that we will have already invested by that point toward this redevelopment plan. So I think, you know, unless the world changed in a way that, that we can't foresee, I don't think that that, you know, I don't see that as a likely outcome. Candidly, there's, you know, a piece that everyone's talked about on C1 that is a little outside of our control right now, but we're, we're interested in, in trying to solve for it and that's the existing tenancy in there. So I think, you know, we're, we're certainly all rowing in the same direction for how we would pursue that, but that's, you know, certainly out there.
Very good. I'll leave it there for now. Thank you, Justin.
Member Wright.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. I guess to pay back on the Mayor Protem, for that two-year period, have you thought about things like the pop-up venues that are very popular for seasonal type of thing where you, you know, can capitalize on revenue and we could receive that, you know, tax, sales tax income?
Sure. The, the intent with the, I think after tonight, it'll be up to a lot of people to figure out the language behind this so that we can bring a formal agreement back for everyone to consider. However, you know, I think the intent behind this is that we don't, you know, stop, go out and sign 10-year leases or 20-year leases that would preclude that. Anything in a shorter term basis that makes sense that everyone's on board with, I think we'd approach completely differently.
Case by case type of thing.
It's just for, for more traditional retailers, they're, they're usually interested in longer-term commitments for, because they're getting ready to spend a lot of capital as well. So those are the things that we're really alluding to with that two-year lockout.
Okay. My next question, looking at this map, where are we looking at to put the parking for RTD since we have the light rail right there?
We have not, we have not gotten that far yet, to be honest, on the master plan. Everything west is really what's been done to date. We've reached out to RTD and at least initiated a contact, but that's as far as we've gotten at this point.
Okay. And then one more question and I'll move on. You have, I'm looking for the page again, two different rental types, subsidized and I think traditional. Have you, do you have a number of each type of unit types in your mind or is it still the planning phase?
It's still at the planning phase. I think the, and you're referring to the market base versus subsidized, yeah. So the, the point there is that, you know, our, our objective, one of our first steps would be to come back to this council and say, okay, we think the market without support would, you know, build 200 units or something along those lines. And they're market-based units. And the council may say, you know what, we want 500 and some affordable and, you know, other components that are a part of that. So what we would want to do is present council and the community with those options to, to consider what that looks like and whether or not there's, you know, public dollars contributed toward whatever that might look like. So we would present those to council to consider.
Okay, thank you.
Member Pring.
Thank you, thank you for being here this evening and the presentation. Just wanting to make sure that I'm tracking the proposal correctly. So were council to not desire to release a more immediate release of the ground lease? Do I understand correctly that you, your proposal is that you would rent out the spaces to second-tier type entities and, and it's basically make cash off of that moving forward?
Yeah, I mean, I, I wouldn't say, you know, we're, we're targeting, you know, it'd be like a target of a second tier. I think the, the, the point is we have to generate cash flow and an investment if there's no clear path to another outcome. So yes, we would pursue opportunities to, to lease it up. And I mean, right now we have a 30% leased asset that is struggling. So we would need to move forward with, with a different, different path at that point.
Okay. That's helpful. And so based on the answer, being newer to council, I, I know that this project has been talked about for several years. I've had constituents come and ask me what's going on with the plans. There's a lot of curiosity and it's pretty high profile. So how do I answer to constituents who might have some skepticism about handing over the ground lease to developers who essentially what I'm seeing in this proposal is not willing to give us a clear vision into what the design is. I, I understand that we have a illustration of what it could be, but our residents want to know what's going to happen to the area. And I, as a council member, want to know that there's some assurance of kind of a continuity of vision for use of this space within the city, which should be one of our more vibrant, attractive places within the city. So how do I answer to a, a constituent that might have some skepticism about, you know, just kind of handing over a ground lease to developers who haven't given us a plan or shown like a true holding hands on the design and use of this space?
Well, I think, you know, I think there's, there's several things you can answer that with. I think the reality is, is that, you know, we're still going to have plenty to work together on. And I think the, the west of INCA piece is still the majority of the development at the end of the day from a land standpoint. So we're talking about two parcels candidly that are impacted by a redevelopment and what that looks like. It is in our best interest to make sure that development fits within the overall master plan for, you know, a myriad of reasons. But it needs to tie in, you know, we want to see the, the activation, whether we have a ice rink there because it's going to help attract residents, it's going to help, you know, rents or whatnot. That retail on C1, C2 needs to be successful. So I think there's going to be a significant collaboration on top of the fact that we want to be the ones developing your west side. And you're not going to let us do that unless we're, we're proving ourselves throughout this process. So we see that development agreement and that on your list of, of items that I was talking about coming, you know, quickly after this. It's just there is a lot to it and it is going to take time to develop, to develop those and a significant amount of money. So we're committing, I mean, we're putting our money where our mouth is in, in a huge way by both designing consultant fees, but also trading assets to the community and giving up $2 million a year in revenue to, to see this through. So, I mean, you know, that, that would be something we wouldn't offer if we were, had an ulterior motive, I guess is the best way to say it.
Thank you.
Member Russell.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. So basically, what we're really looking at is C1 and C2 is the lion's share of what you're asking for right now in consideration for the ground lease or is there?
There we go. The Pad D is also under the ground lease.
Pad D?
Yep.
Okay. And there's current, that's where Harbor Freight is correct in Pad D or no, it's in C?
It's in C. So Harbor Freight is C1 and then Pad D is Ross, Noodles, Pato.
Okay. And the Bankin, okay. And the north-south orientation rather than the east-west is to open it up really even to access from Hampton. So very likely in these areas, there will be some retail. C1 and C2, are we also talking about housing in addition to?
Correct. So just generically, we took the, the C1, C2 that was on a previous version and just shifted it. So I think there were 600 or so units that were on some of those previous versions. So in theory, that's, that's what that would be with as much ground floor retail on that frontage as, as you would, you know, be able to accommodate.
So not only, not meaning the frontage on Hampton, meaning the frontage on each of the streets?
Correct. I mean, you, the retail, if I understand your, your question correctly, I would imagine that your retail might wrap around for that Hampton frontage, but your access to the storefront would probably come off the side street. But we have not gotten to that level of detail by any means.
Okay. All right, thank you. I appreciate that.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you. My question is, I think one of the things that we have going for us since, in terms of the city, you know, assuring that we're going to get something out of this along the lines of what we want is the current zoning and the overlay in this area. Are you, are you satisfied with how it's zoned or do you anticipate coming back for a PUD or rezoning of any kind when you come to redevelop?
I'm not sure we can answer that until we know exactly where, what we would be constructing or asked to construct. So, you know, the height limits, you know, the massing and the parking, you know, all of that. So I don't think I'm really at a point where I can answer that today.
Fair enough.
Go ahead, Member Ward.
In your presentation, you mentioned some of the vision. The first line, under our pledge to spend money upon termination says DDA and public financing agreement. How, how much public financing do you anticipate receiving to fund the project aside from the $3.5 million the city would potentially be giving you for the Tokyo Joe's property?
We don't know the answer to that yet. I think that's where, where I'm, where we listed the market base versus subsidized options. A lot of that depends on what the city and the community want to see there and what the market's going to support and then what that gap looks like if there is a gap. So that, that's where we would envision that, that public-private partnership contributing is to fill that gap.
So the public financing would only go towards subsidized housing or would it, would you use public financing?
Yeah, it could go towards infrastructure, subsidized housing. We had a couple other categories if there was, you know, a bridge or some sort of connection that was necessary, those, those kinds of things, I think, is what we had discussed. But that's really open to discussion for what the community wants versus what, again, where that gap might, might be.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Jones, just a question, kind of going back to that market-based development and subsidized development. So C1, C2. My question is, for the subsidized, how likely is it that there would be a portion of the subsidized within a market-based development, a percentage? Are we, are we talking about a certain percentage within C1 or C2 or are we saying C1 may be all subsidized, C2 may be all market-based? What's more likely?
We have not gotten that far yet. I wish I could answer, but I, you know, I, it, it really depends on, I think, what, what the infrastructure looks like. Is there a public parking garage that needs to serve the particular area? Does the city want to see a pedestrian? I mean, there, there's a lot of questions, I, I think, that we haven't really answered yet to know how that would even be utilized at this point.
And I guess the, the other question I have, Mr. Jones, I think, trying to get an understanding of this, how often have you dealt with a similar situation in the past? Meaning the city owns the ground lease, you're looking to buy out the ground lease and, yeah, and basically start development this way? Is, is this common? Have you gone through this before? And I'll ask a second part to that question here in a second.
No, I mean, I think more often than not, you would have fee simple to the ground and you, then you work on what that pu, public-private partnership looks like after that, based on the, the needs and the desires of the community.
Yeah. On our Glendale project, we didn't have a ground lease, but the city was our direct conduit to get the property rezoned so we could do multifamily and that was crucial for the economics of the overall deal. So we were able to control, given the city what they needed by buying the apartment building that had been burned and then raising that and, you know, making it move in, park in ready, I guess is the right word, for the city. So that solved their issue with that and that enabled them to support our rezone. So it's very similar, it wasn't a ground lease, but there was many steps in that. We had to listen intently to what the city wanted to, because the rezone is a hot button like anybody is in any city. But that parking was so essential for the city on the other side and it was complicated. We, we took an apartment building that was dilapidated and made it overall parking. You can imagine how the residents feel about that. They don't like when a burned-down project next to them, but they weren't real keen on having a big parking field right next to where they are. So we worked with the city to really mitigate that and work through it. So very similar, many agreements, development agreements, things like that. So we would perform, deliver, and then they would work with us on the rezone.
Mr. King, what was the timing of that? Was that after the rugby stadium was already built or currently?
Yes, yes. Yeah, that, that all occurred really over, over about the last nine years and it was a four-year project. So it was completed, say, five years ago, something like that. So, yeah.
Any further questions for members of council? Go ahead, Member Noonan Camp.
Thank you for the clarification tonight, as you've said a few times, west of INCA versus east of INCA. Obviously, if you have looked at our site plan, you know that our desire is, or the conversations we've had up to this point, I won't speak for the entire council, but my desire would be to see redevelopment across the entire site, not just east of INCA. And so I'm curious, you know, one of the, I think, concerns we might have is if we terminate the ground lease east of INCA, something, you know, goes well or doesn't go well for, for you all there, we might never see redevelopment on the west side of INCA. What are your thoughts on or interest or commitment to pursuing development on the west side of INCA as well? Or do you see that as a maybe in your perspective at this point?
No, we'd, we'd love to do it and we'd love to do it simultaneously. We just didn't want to be presumptuous on the, the city's intent.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Mr. Jones, you might just clarify for me. You're asking for a termination of the entire ground lease, correct?
Correct.
Okay. But the timing would be for east of INCA to occur first in terms of a plan and then west of INCA may follow thereafter, correct?
I, I mean, I think the master plan is, could really go simultaneously. I don't think it needs to be sequential. I think we have at least, based on everything we've learned, C2 is the, the path of least resistance in terms of just everything that's known. But there's still a lot of work to do in, in terms of creating covenants and, well, everything we've talked about.
Right. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that I understood it correctly, that it wasn't just going to be C1, C2 first. It could all change. It could be, market conditions change where it just makes sense to do everything all at once, something, you know, there may be, whatever it happens to be, something may occur that may open up the conversation for everything west of INCA to occur as well.
Yeah, and, and our primary focus is going to be to creating the, the platform so that all of it can go. And I think that's where we're going to be spending our immediate time and energy is, is doing that. So it, you know, to the extent the, the city would like to engage us to, to handle the entire, entire site for the master development, we'd love to do it.
Go ahead, Member Russell.
So, my question is, especially on C1, C2, and, I mean, already there is parking on the D lot. If the retail is based on drive-by from Hampton, there has got to be parking for people to come in there. I mean, I know that a lot of people on this council thinks we don't need any parking at all, but if we don't have adequate parking, the retail will fail there also.
Certainly, the last thing we would want to see is vacant retail to continue, and you want to make it successful. I think where you've probably seen some hybrid of that is, are things like Bellevue Station, where they have, you know, some of that street parking, as well as, you know, nearby lot parking or structured parking. So, that would certainly be a consideration as well.
Okay, and probably at some point, then, we may have to decide area down here where we want to designate to parking also.
Yeah, and I think it's a lot of conversations with RTD and others to, you know, come up with a plan that's going to make the most sense for the area.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you. You mentioned 20, you know, you're estimating this as kind of a $20 million valuation in terms of the properties. How'd you come up with those, those numbers, and specifically, how would you allocate those between the north retail there and the 24-hour fitness building?
Sorry, can you say that last part again?
How would you, what would you say each of the properties you're giving up is worth individually? So, break that down for me.
Got you. Yeah. I think, you know, the way we looked at it is replacement value primarily. So, if you were going to go out and replicate that 24-hour fitness building today, you know, is it somewhere around $400 a square foot just to replace that asset? Construction costs have, you know, gone up significantly, and so, that, that's primarily how we looked at it, was replacement cost plus the value of that, the purchase option on the Tokyo Joe's.
Okay, and then the other question is just determining the value of the, you know, how are you thinking about determining the value of the ground lease that we're talking about releasing there?
I mean, don't take it personally, but we don't see it having a lot of value for 50 years, and that's the, you know, a traditional ground lease where you have ongoing income payments are certainly a different analysis than something that's been prepaid and, you know, when it was set up. So, it's worth something 50 years from now, but today, it's hard to place much value on it. That's how we would look at it.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Any further questions for members of council? I don't see any further questions. I, as I stated at the beginning, since this is fresh in our minds, I did ask that we put an executive session on the calendar for next Monday night to discuss this issue. And so, I guess, as a point, I'm not sure if we are looking to invite New England, but there may be a need to have New England there, just in case if any questions come up in the executive session. Since the, I'm actually guessing that it probably won't be necessary, but, you know, we'll probably have that conversation at some point later on tonight, is probably a council member's choice to find out, but since we do have some time, I guess, in a sense, we may just relay those questions to you after our executive session concludes, if anything does come up, so. I, Member Russell, go ahead.
I just, I had written down a note before. Were you involved in the development between Earth Trex and the storage unit, the apartment unit, or no?
We were involved in the re-entitlement, and then we ultimately sold it to Five Field Development, who did the vertical piece.
Okay. And do you know what the current lease, lease rate is for that building?
They just told us. I can get back to you on that. I know they opened over the holidays, which is not the ideal time, so they're planning on more of a ramp-up in the spring, and I think we'll probably have a better indication on where things will settle out here in a few months, rather than taking a snapshot of where they may have been doing, you know, transactions the past couple of months.
Okay. I appreciate that. And also, would that be something that you would take into consideration? What's happening there, if it's not living up to expectations, might impact the development that you would be choosing to do, correct?
I mean, it would certainly influence it. I think the reality of the, not just that market, I mean, they didn't have the best timing, just with the amount of product that has hit the Denver Metro area this year, but I think the common, you know, understanding right now is that that should flush through pretty quick, and that the occupancy should come back to normal levels, historic normal levels, fairly quickly, but right now, it's, you know, there's a lot of product out there. So, that's the, I think, the danger with trying to take a snapshot of what it looks like today versus, you know, six months from now or a year from now, when we expect the majority of that product to be absorbed. Because the other factor is that there hasn't been anything breaking ground for a long period of time, so you're going to have, you know, several years there where no new supply is really going to come to fruition.
All right. I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. With no further questions, Mr. Ogilvy, Mr. King, and Mr. Jones, thank you very much for your time tonight. We'll be back in touch, and just appreciate you making time for us this evening.
Thank you, council.
All right, everyone, we are going to take a 10-minute break, and then we'll come back at the top of the hour to call this meeting to order. Thank you very much. Members of council, if you could please be seated. You're not going to sit, right?
No.
Okay. All right. All right, everyone, I call this meeting to order. If you're able to do so, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk, if you could please take a walk off.
Yes, good evening. Mayor Protem Anderson.
Present.
Member Noonan Camp.
Present.
Member Prang.
Present.
Member Russell.
Present.
Member Ward.
Present.
Member Wright.
Present.
Mayor Siera.
Present.
All seven present.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 5, minutes from the regular City Council meeting of February 18th. Any changes to the minutes? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the minutes from February 18th?
Still moved.
Thank you, Member Ward. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Can we please vote?
Mayor Protem Anderson.
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp.
Aye.
Member Prang.
Aye.
Member Russell.
Aye.
Member Ward.
Aye.
Member Wright.
Aye.
Mayor Siera.
Aye.
Let the record show, seven aces.
Thank you. Moving on to recognition. So, first, the Inglewood City Council would like to express our sincere appreciation for the dedication and hard work of our board and commission members. Your commitment to serving our community plays a vital role in shaping the future of Inglewood, and we are grateful for the time, expertise, and passion you bring to these important positions. Thank you for your continued service and contributions to making us, making our city a better place for all. We're going to go ahead and recognize you and provide you a recognition through a certificate, so when you hear your name, please come forward.
All right. So, for Board of Adjustment and Appeals, alternate member Samuel Cohen, Koenig. Code Enforcement Advisory Committee, regular member Linda Hart. Alternate member Rick Somerson. Cultural Arts Commission, we have regular member Angelica Delorio. Regular member Luisa Alvarez. Alternate member Jennifer Bartlet. I think this storm got them. Inglewood Downtown Development Authority, regular member Dan Frank. Election Commission, regular member Robert Watson. Inglewood Transportation Advisory Committee, regular member Jacob Somerson. Regular member Jake Gilbert. Alternate member Madeline Pike. Okay. Historic President. Historic Preservation Commission, regular member Jim Woodward. Malle Center Trust Fund, regular member Rebecca Kramer. Parks and Recreation Commission, regular member Kristen Beard. Regular member Nicholas Palmer. Regular member Emma Wood. And regular member Rhonda Wilcox. Planning and Zoning Commission, we have regular member Noah Kaplan. Regular member Michelle Austin. Regular member Carl Adams. And alternate member Amy Cesario. For the Public Library Board, we have regular member Amy Wilson. And regular member Alex D. For Sustainability Committee, we have regular member Hillary Kerwan. Regular member Logan Dunning. Regular member Tracy Savina. We have regular member Lana Garcia. Alternate member Killian Williams. And then for Urban Renewals Authority, we have regular member Nicholas Claremore. And Water and Sewer Board, we have regular member John Moore. And alternate member Alexa Kelly.
Going to have to break you all up. All right, everyone, moving on to the next recognition. This is a recognition of Inglewood, the Inglewood Ambassadors. So Inglewood City Council would like to recognize the Inglewood Ambassador Program. Launched in 2024, the Inglewood Ambassadors are a group of about 20 dedicated city employees who represent the city of Inglewood at various community and neighborhood events, service projects, and resident frequentant locations. Ambassadors work to answer the questions about city initiatives, connect with residents, and address their concerns. In 2024, the Inglewood Ambassadors attended 28 events, including eight service projects, eight community events, seven school events, and ten, or excuse me, and two neighborhood hosted events. These staff members show commitment to furthering authentic community engagement and step outside of their regular job descriptions to take on this role. Inglewood City Council thanks you for your contributions and dedication to the city of Inglewood. We're going to follow a similar process. We'll have our City Clerk Carlisle read off the names, and we'll be handing out certificates to each of you as well.
All right. The Inglewood Ambassadors for 2024 were Victoria McDermott, City Attorney's Office. Andrea Weaver, Public Works. Rachel Graffman, Public Works. Erin Bartlett, South Platte Renew. Garrett Soni, Parks Recreation Library and Golf. Jody Barrows, Public Works. Fletcher Johnson, City Manager's Office. Andrina Prado, City Clerk's Office. Sarah Stand, Parks Recreation Library and Golf. John Vorbural, Community Development. John Wright, South Platte Renew. Lindsay Peterson, Parks Recreation Library and Golf. Lauren Worley, Utilities. Brian Isham. Sorry, Community Development, I was reading, I'm sorry. I apologize. Tyson Thornburg, Finance. Chad Reed, Police Department. Courtney Johnson-Roco, Human Resources. In addition, five new city staff applied and were accepted to the program in 2025, which include Amanda Arntz from Communications. Tasha Neal from Utilities. Elise Dutchover, Police Department. Stacy Durbin, Police Department. And Jen Neckerson, Utilities. Okay, so we have one more for the 2025 that just were accepted, and that's Mike Smith, Fire Marshal. And then two additional ambassadors that were part of the program last year, Mark Hessling, IT. You're good. You're working hard. And Tammy Avis from Utilities.
There we go. So no appointments, communications, and proclamations for tonight, so we're moving to recognition of public comment. Member Noonan Camp is giving a response tonight. So Inglewood residents must provide your address or cross streets. Non-Inglewood residents must provide the name of the city. If you have addressed council in the last 90 days, you would be moved to the bottom of the list, and written materials may be submitted to the City Clerk in advance of the meeting. Audio visuals are, must be submitted to the City Clerk by 5:00 PM. We are limiting public comment to 90 minutes tonight, but I don't think that will be an issue tonight. You'll have three minutes to speak. And the expectation is that you will address City Council in a respectful manner. City Council may ask questions for clarification, but there will not be any dialogue. We do have four speakers in person tonight, so we'll start off first with Rhonda Wilcox, an Inglewood resident within District One, here to speak about Movement 5280. Good evening, Rhonda. When you are ready, please begin. Yes, star button should make that green, should make the microphone green. Try it again. There we go.
Good, okay. Good evening, my name is Rhonda Wilcox. I live in the Old Town neighborhood on the border of Hawthorne. Recently, two of the neighbors from Hawthorne were here to give their thoughts and opinions on Movement 5280, and I appreciate the opportunity to give a different viewpoint. Having been a part of the Good Neighbor Agreement and committee process, I have listened to these four neighborhood ladies, Tammy, Kristen, Lydia, and Allison, and I am of the opinion that they believe that Movement 5280 brought homelessness into our neighborhood. I disagree with this thought. I believe that homelessness was already a part of our neighborhood and our city, and I think the opposite is true, that homelessness brought Movement 5280 to our neighborhood, and I am grateful that they are there. I have witnessed firsthand the love and compassion that the staff, Bella, Julie, Jamie, and Tina, just to name a few, have for their clients. Unlike the above-mentioned neighbors, the staff do not see their clients as a problem or to be dealt with or to be moved, but rather as humans in need of love. And they truly love them and desire to help them. These people struggle, and they need a place to accept and help them. They need compassion, not contempt, and they find that at Movement 5280. Two of the four neighborhood ladies have stated that they work with the same type of clients as Movement 5280. So their demand and their lack of compassion confuses me. I would think they would be more understanding. From the beginning, they have made it clear that they want Movement 5280 moved from their neighborhood. And their unwillingness to see past this demand has stalled our progress as a Good Neighbor Committee and has caused intense hardship for the staff at Movement 5280. It would be wonderful if they could let go of this unrealistic expectation and support the work being accomplished there. For example, one of their continuous demands is that the property be outfitted with motion-censored cameras. It would be a gesture of kindness and great helpfulness for them to purchase these cameras and have them installed. The reason for my presentation is not to speak harshly against these neighbors, but to share a different viewpoint and to let City Council and those listening to my presentation know that there is a different opinion. Theirs is not the only opinion. There are citizens and neighbors who support Movement 5280. Thank you.
Rhonda, thank you very much for your time tonight. Any questions for members of council? Seeing none. Rhonda, thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Up next is Travis Mans, here also to speak about Movement 5280. Also an Inglewood resident within District One.
Yes.
Travis, when you are ready, your three minutes will begin once you speak.
Cool.
Actually, the light's already on, so you can just go ahead and speak.
Okay, cool. Council, council members and mayor, thank you for this time. Thank you, everyone, for being here to listen. I also have a unique perspective on Movement 5280. I've had the luxury of spending several hours with Jamie and with Tina and with Bella and some of the people who run that organization, and it's a beautiful organization. I would invite ways to, as we've discussed with her, to bring some light to what this group is actually doing, what the contributions are to the people who are in need, the deep, deep sense of love and gratitude that comes from all the things that they're doing in support of people when they're going to be sitting on a street being frostbite. Instead, they have a warm place to stay. Instead of going hungry, they have food in their bellies. And not only that, the organization is highly focused on, you know, allowing them to help themselves, finding ways for them to get to the point where they can get a driver's license, where they can get to where they can hold a job, where they can actually have a place to live. So this organization is not just about taking care of homeless people. It's about trying to lift people up, to create an opportunity for them to grow, to find a better way of life. And at the heart of it all is this deep sense of love. I've been through the kitchen, I've been through the food bank, I've walked through the entire facility, and I would encourage anybody that is curious to do that. There's talks about, and I'm hoping to help with this, to build a garden, a community garden, where we can bring people together, possibly have an event so that we can share what this movement is really about. It's a tremendous movement. It's here to help people. It's here to lift people up. It's here to spread love. And if that's not important, I don't know what is. So on that note, that's all I have to say. I just wanted to come and support the movement because I've had the pleasure of spending time with them. Thank you.
Travis, thank you very much for your time tonight. Any questions for members of council? I see none, so Travis, thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Up next is Rebecca Kramer, also an Inglewood resident in D2, here to speak, I believe, about the PUD, if I have the address correct. Good evening, Rebecca.
Good evening, council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I wanted to speak to the 401 proposed apartment building on 401 Parkway. Just like the presentation we had earlier tonight, these developers are not invested in the city of Inglewood. They don't care about the citizens and the quality of life here. They have securities, REITs, investments, they have investors to satisfy, and that's what their concern is, is the rate of return that they can give to their shareholders. So again, I'm against the construction of yet another apartment building in Inglewood. The city has been overdensified in recent years. This has caused an erosion of the quality of life here in Inglewood. The report produced by Kimco provides that, according to their own analysis, the market in this area will not support additional high-density multifamily units. 285 Hamden is already a parking lot many times during the day. It cannot absorb more traffic that this apartment building would bring to this location, specifically all the additional vehicles. The lack of businesses in Inglewood does not support the multimodal walkability argument that they make. The report also states that 5% of the units will be ADA compliant, while 14% of Inglewood has ADA needs. The traffic calming measures on Cherokee that are proposed, if we don't build the apartment building, we won't need to put in traffic calming measures because the traffic won't be there. I am concerned about the lack of sun exposure on Floyd. When you add in the traffic calming measures, the city will be unable to plow Floyd in the wintertime. Currently, if you drive up Floyd, there's garbage and debris in the biking lanes where the sticks and blocks sit. And I don't believe the city has a grasp on the current vacancy rates, and I would advise that you do an inquiry with the USPS because they have solid vacancy rates. If you reach out to the apartment complexes, you're not going to get an honest answer, but the postmen that deliver the mail, they know exactly how many vacancy cards exist. Thank you.
Rebecca, thank you very much for your time. Any questions for Rebecca from members of council? Seeing none. Rebecca, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And last on the list is Gary Kozak, also an Inglewood resident. And last on the list is Gary Kozak, also an Inglewood resident within D4, here to speak about safety.
Good evening, city council. Good evening, neighbors. My subject tonight is on the safety of our kids. Last week or last year, last meeting, you've approved putting gathering towers on some of the school systems to gather the information from our water meters. I have sent it to Stephanie. She didn't get ahold of it, but she looked forward at you guys on a study that shows that it is very risky, and a lot of school districts have turned it down. You'd better take a close look at it. Some of you are up for reelection. I'm going in front of the school board tomorrow because somebody here had said that it had already been cleared with the school system and stuff. My partner's a school board member and knew nothing about it. So, it is going to be in front of them, and I'm going publicly with them in the news report. I ought to be listening because it is dangerous. We have apartment houses you can put it on. Secondly, you're talking about the safety and the stuff in the library and all this. Okay? This is safety here. What about the safety with the kids crossing the street? We've had meters put down there on Oxford and showing the high speeds and the racing and stuff, and you say, "Oh, well, I don't want quotas. We don't have to have quotas." Well, if you don't stop it, or if you don't start patrolling it, we're going to lose more lives. Okay? Quote is a big deal. I understand because Sheridan used to do that, but that's not with this force here. We need to start patrolling that again. And as far as the sign across the street, watch the kids down there. Oh, wait a minute. We got Cherry Lynn. Cherry Lynn is... My partner was standing out there at a meeting and watched three cars run the stop sign at Cherry Lynn Elementary School. Hey, wait a minute. We have a camera now on one of those monitors. Can we not film it? As long as somebody gets away with it's not illegal to run a stop sign if you don't get caught, or run a red light if you don't get caught. Lastly, because I'm running out of time, this ranked choice voting. I understand that if you only vote for one because you'd be damned if you want somebody else on there that's running, that your lane gets eliminated altogether. Plus, you're going to have to turn around and create new rules and pay that added expense to go ahead and monitor and count the ranked choice voting. I'm absolutely against it, and I will be talking publicly on all of this, especially the safety of the kids, and it will be heard tomorrow night. Thank you.
Mr. Kozak, thank you very much for your time tonight. Any questions from council?
Oh, I did have one other thing.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead. You had...
Ms. Rita, to answer your question, the apartment house has under twenty percent, and they've been open two months. And the other one, they just opened there on Windermere, is no better. They're not filling it up.
Thank you, Gary. You had fifteen seconds, but thank you for that. All right. See no further questions? Thank you very much, Gary. And just want to confirm, Stephanie, any other speakers? Nope? All right. And with that, that concludes public comments. Member Noonan Camp, you may give a response when you're ready.
Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight, and thank you to those who spoke, to Ms. Wilcox and Ms. Romance, which I do believe that they've already left, but thank you so much for coming and sharing your experience living in a neighborhood with Fifty-Two Eighty. It's very helpful to hear your experience. We want to make sure we're listening to the broad range of experiences and perspectives, and so that's very helpful to us. Thank you so much for being here. Ms. Kramer, thank you for being here and for sharing your thoughts. We will be voting this evening on second reading on that development, so I appreciate you coming and sharing your opinion with us. And Mr. Kozak, who I also think just walked out the door, a couple of things here. Thank you so much for sharing the information and your concern about the school buildings. I'm looking forward to reading the study that you will be sharing with us. Appreciate the opportunity to talk about safety, especially automobile safety near our schools. We actually... He spoke about Oxford specifically. We are looking at... We've actually applied for a Safe Routes to School grant to look at installing a crosswalk in that area so that we actually can ensure we do have safety for kids who are traveling to the Clayton School area, and we are also increasing our safety, traffic safety budget this year, and also looking at other things we can do to partner with our schools on traffic safety specifically around schools. So, I appreciate that he is paying attention to that, something that's a high priority for this council this year. And then the last thing I'll note on his comment about ranked choice voting, that is called bullet voting, for those who aren't familiar, when you only fill in one bullet when you are a candidate, when you're voting in a ranked choice ballot. And I've never seen a system where it would throw out your vote, and I certainly wouldn't support a system where it would be implemented that way. So, even if you only vote for one in a ranked choice voting system, your vote still counts. So, that is everything I have.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Anyone else? Go ahead, Member Russell.
I just have a couple of council requests, and one of them was a comment that Ms. Kramer made about garbage and debris in the Floyd bike lanes. Could we check that out and make sure it gets cleaned up? And then also, I do remember Mr. Kozak shared that we put those trailers on Oxford, and there was a lot of speeding. I'm kind of wondering if we can address the speed, the speeding on Oxford and the cars running stop signs. Is there a way to have officers stationed at the different schools to make sure that the children are safe? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Member Russell. Member Russell, was that Floyd bike path, did you bring that up last week as well?
I...
Or Kim?
I was going to ask, Member Russell.
Yeah, I said we brought it up, didn't we?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was just going to ask if it's the same area. We were looking at Lafayette, Gerard, that whole Floyd area.
Oh, it might not be that far. So, I was thinking about...
Floyd was...
Around the development.
Floyd was included in that.
Okay, but I would think she's talking about Floyd west of Broadway.
Yeah, around Kimco.
Right. Yes.
Okay. Perfect. All right. I knew I heard it last week. So, anything else, Member Wright? Nope? All right. All right. Moving on, so we get to move forward with public, or excuse me, with agenda items. I only had one item polled for tonight, nine eighty-one. Any others from members of council? All right. See none. Can I get a motion to approve nine B, one through four, nine C, one and two?
So, moved.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Pring. Can we please vote?
Mayor Protim Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Pring?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show seven aces.
Thank you. Moving on, moving back to ninety-one, this is CB seven municipal code cleanup. We have a few questions for city attorney Tamara Niles and Member Wright. Do you have those questions?
Yes. So, you had answered me, but since I had pulled it, I would just like to go over those plays so everyone understood why I was pulling it. So, what I would like to note, what I asked is, under department organization, the city manager has the ability to reorganize, I guess, on a temporary basis. So, what I was asking is if the city manager reassines those duties and responsibilities to departments, how long is temporary, and does the city council get informed by the city manager?
Yes. Thank you for the question. To my knowledge, this hasn't happened in recent time, but temporary is not defined. I would interpret this as saying the city manager, if there's an operational reason, the city manager could ask one department to perform the duties that were otherwise assigned to a department. But if it's a long-term solution, then we would bring forward an ordinance like the one in front of you to make it permanent. For example, the ordinance in front of you changes municipal code that states risk management is an HR function, removes that because that's been permanently reassigned to my office, so it's now overseen by the city attorney's office. So, not defined, but it's certainly not intended to be a long-term change. This has also been in municipal code for some time, and it's not being proposed for change tonight.
So, I guess, when risk management used to be under HR and it was moved onto you, how our city attorney's office, I apologize, when was that done and when was it brought to council when that happened?
So, actually, no. It was a function of finance, and then it was reassigned back to HR, and then it was assigned to my office. So, that's why this was a code cleanup item, because code didn't reflect current practice. So, I'm not sure when those changes happened, but I don't believe any of them were intended to be temporary.
So, should have it been brought to council?
I would have recommended we do that, yes, but as part of our code cleanup project, we knew that municipal code didn't reflect current practices. This isn't the first code cleanup item that we've brought. So, what we're doing in a large project for my office is to look at every section of city code that no longer reflects current practice and bring it to city council. And then going forward, make sure that it's kept current as changes are made.
Okay. So, I guess what I would ask, and this is where I'm going to turn to my senior council members, I would like to propose a... I don't know if it's a current change here, or what we need to do is define what a temporary basis is and define that city council is made aware of these type of... As we're doing this cleanup, city council is made aware of these type of changes when they become permanent.
Thank you, Member Wright. Well, do you want to discuss that topic now or in terms of just identifying what constitutes a temporary change or define what a temporary change is? I think there was a couple more questions, I think, to your...
Right, but this is one part, and then the other goes into a different section.
Okay.
I mean, so if we're making these changes to this part of the code now, wouldn't it be best that we address it now?
City Attorney Niles, is there any type of guidance in terms of what a temporary change or how long a temporary change should occur?
It's up to council's discretion. If you want to define that term, you certainly can, or you can leave it to city manager's discretion to determine what's temporary and what's not.
Thank you.
Either way, it's fine.
Thank you, City Attorney Niles. Mayor Protim? Oh, no, from previous time. Any council members want to weigh in on temporary or this topic? Go ahead, Member Russell.
I don't think it would necessarily hurt to define it. It may not have been used in the past, but having the definition, as long as we're doing cleanup now, it's not going to change it that much. And so, after, I think Councilmember Ward wants to weigh in, but I think we could entertain a motion to amend.
Thank you, Member Russell.
Okay. Thank you.
Member Ward?
I guess my question is, the nexus of this concern and Charter fifty-two, which provides for the duties of the city manager, specifically fifty-two G, exercise supervision and control over all executive and administrative departments, including the authority... excuse me, with prior approval of council by ordinance to establish, consolidate, or abolish administrative departments.
But that's not what it...
Go ahead.
I apologize.
No, you're fine.
That's not what it's saying. It's saying on a temporary basis, reassign duties and responsibilities. So, it's a temporary thing. What I'm asking is, we establish what is temporary before it becomes permanent. Is it seven days? Is it ten days? It's thirty days? Is it ninety days? That's what I'm asking this council to do.
I think there was a second part to your question, though, like what's the... what is the concern that we're looking to solve here? It's just the fact that temporary is open-ended? Is it more just temporary?
Right, and I guess, so, let me give a hypothetical is what I was kind of thinking. So, let's say something happens in communication, they're struggling, and so city manager temporarily puts them under community development. What is temporary before they permanently go under community development? And this is just a hypothetical type of thinking.
Sorry, on the right, Member Cap and then Member Pring.
I appreciate the question, and I think it's a good thing we're doing a close read and that we're asking the question, and I think in most cases, I lean towards being clear about what things mean and definitions. For this, however, if we were to need to reassign in a situation like you gave the hypothetical just now, it clearly would be based on some sort of need or something happening in the city, and I'm hesitant to actually define this here because we might need maximum flexibility if something like that were to happen. Maybe we have a staffing issue. I would hesitate to say it only can be thirty days, it only can be sixty days if there's an unforeseen something in the future where we would need to do something a little bit different. And I have... I don't think we're... I'm not concerned about this being abused right now by not defining temporary, so this doesn't feel like a problem that's in need of a solution for me personally, so I would support leaving it as is, but I appreciate the discussion.
Member Pring?
Thank you. I tend to agree with Member Noonan Camp on this one. I feel like the need to temporarily reassign could... the timeframe for that could vary in any given situation, and so defining it then potentially creates more administrative burden of having to, you know, define it for a certain amount of time and then redefine it and et cetera. I don't... I think that there is just too many circumstances where it could be a shift in the time needed to reassign something and then bring it back to where it's originally assigned. So, I would hesitate to define it because of that.
Can I...
Thank you, Member Pring. Go ahead, Member Wright.
And I guess my question to this, and my thought is, it was nineteen eighty... is it eighty-five, that there was a major overhaul, and then I believe the early two thousands? So, we're going, you know, eighty-five is in here, so that's forty years, and then two thousand possibly, so another twenty-five years before major rehalls. So, this is going to last long past us, and if we're given some direction... We have fantastic staff now, but what's going to happen in the future where possibly some direction, even if it says six months for temporary, is what I'm just thinking for the future because this may last for another twenty-five years. And that's what I'm thinking into the future because this is a huge overhaul, and we need to think about that. It's not done every other year. It's done every, you know, twenty-five years or forty years.
Right.
And that's what we need to think about.
Yeah. No, it's a good point, Member Wright. I think the way that I'm kind of thinking about it is that I'd like to get information from our city manager, Lewis, as well. So, with this being first reading, we'll have a chance to make any changes on second reading. If we can have him respond back to potential, you know, instances that he's come across where he can see, yeah, I can see like this being a temporary should be three months or six months because we considered this in the past. If he's got specific examples where he can say, yeah, I would be comfortable with that, then I would be willing to put that into place. So, I think with it being just first reading, I would be okay with just leaving this as is, but then having this question again during the second reading in a couple of weeks.
And I would agree with that because there has been incidents, so I would agree with that.
Perfect.
Okay.
Go ahead, Member Wright.
And then the other is, we have the... And my printer just went weird, and I apologize. So, we have enforces codes, code enforcement, and fire marshal. So, we have community development enforces codes related to planning environmental housing, health, redevelopment programs. Then we have the police department, which is code enforcement, does not explain everything how they enforce code, and I'm just reading what was in the ordinance here. And then we have the fire marshal inspection and enforcement of related regulatory provisions. What inspection... And my question is, what inspections and enforcement? I get calls often on who does what, and my question is, is this a good opportunity for us to identify in this document exactly who does what? Because our citizens quite often go to what's published. Who do I call for this? Who do I go to that? I believe that staff gets calls quite often saying, where do I go? So, is it an opportunity for us to expand on... So is it an opportunity for us to expand on who does what exactly? So it will save on staff time. And as member Ward quite often says, hopefully, you know, help those who help themselves by researching a little bit and looking it up if there's clearer definitions. And that's what I am asking.
Is that a question for members of council or also like?
Yes, well, and I do know that city attorney did respond. Unfortunately, I was running out the door, so I couldn't print my answer and read it off. My phone is just something I can't do right now.
City Attorney Niles, do you happen to have an answer to that question?
I do. So the fire marshal enforces the fire code, which is in Title 8, Chapter 2E. And that, the fire code details exactly what the fire marshal's duties are. So that's why this is the section in front of you or the chapter in front of you is general city departmental makeup. And it doesn't provide specific duties or how they do their jobs. Those are in other sections of code. Then we do have a specific section of code in Title 6, which lists exactly what code enforcement enforces and exactly what community development through the chief building official enforces. And that's Inglewood Municipal Code 6-5-1. And again, it's not in the departmental makeup ordinance in front of you. But that code section states that code enforcement enforces Titles 5, which is business licensing, 6, health and sanitation, Title 8, building and safety, 9, housing regulations, 11, public ways and property, 12, public utilities, 15, health and sanitation, 16, land use, and Title 7, Chapter 1, Sections 1A, 1B, 1C, which are all animals, and 2, lost or abandoned property. Then the chief building official for community development does contractor licensing in Title 5, Chapter 7, and Titles 8, Building and Safety Code, 9, Housing Regulations, and 16, which is our Land Use Code. So if anyone does have questions about who to call, it is specifically listed in EMC 6-5-1, which is available on our website at municode, where our entire municipal code is listed.
Anything else, member Wright? Go ahead, member Pran.
I have one additional question that I did not send in advance. But I had a question about the striking of sanitation from community development. What is sanitation in this context? And I didn't see a reference to where that responsibility would go.
Yes, I actually reached out to community development on that. Sanitation is trash service, and we don't provide trash service. It's provided by independent haulers throughout the city. So we discussed why is it in there and why does it say community development? They didn't know they don't provide any sanitation services throughout the city.
Thank you.
Go ahead, member Wright.
Thank you. A follow-up question to that, then. Would they do the permitting, permitting to the single haulers then?
Yeah, so this is actually something that kind of is shared by a few departments. So the licensing of haulers is done through business licensing and finance. Issues with violating the code is done by the police department through the code division. And then when single hauler was talked about a couple of years ago, it was Public Works that was leading that study. So it's kind of a shared responsibility.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else on this item? If not, can I get a motion to approve 9A1?
Move to approve 9A1.
Thank you, member Pran. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, mayor Protam. Any further comments? Uh, can we please vote?
Mayor Protam Anderson.
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp.
Aye.
Member Pran.
Aye.
Member Russell.
Aye.
Member Ward.
Aye.
Member Wright.
Aye.
Mayor Sierra.
Aye.
Let the record show seven aces.
Thank you. And Deputy City Manager Dodd, and I'll do this as well, but just some of the concerns that were brought up, or not concerns, or just some of the questions that member Wright brought up regarding examples for that first item. I think we should just have that ready for two weeks from now, so. All right, perfect. We're moving on. Do we need a break or just keep going? Keep going? All right. Move, no public hearing items for tonight. Moving on to 11A1, this is CB 17. This is the authorization of the issuance of the Parks and Rec GO bonds. We had Director of Finance Kevin Ingles, as well as Director of Parks, Rec, Christina Underhill. Hello, Kevin.
Good evening, mayor and council. Kevin Ingles, Director of Finance. Also here is Christina Underhill, Director of Parks, Recreation, and Library in Gulf. This item is an ordinance allowing the city to move forward with the issuing of the general obligation bonds. It's the next step in the process. Have a couple of slides to tell you where we've been and where we're going. So last August, council approved putting this measure on the ballot. In November, voters approved it for a maximum of 41 and a half million borrowing. And December, council approved an ordinance authorizing us to collect the property tax to pay that debt service. And just last week, city staff met with Standard Importers Rating Agency to secure a rating for the bonds. We don't have that information back yet. We should have in the next week or so. A high rating will help us get a better interest rate when we sell the bonds. Here's a high-level recap of the projects that we're going to use the funding for. So tonight, we're recommending that council consider approving this ordinance that allows staff to move forward with the competitive sale of the bonds. And if you approve this tonight and then on second reading, what's next is we will work with our financial advisor. We'll solicit an underwriter. The underwriter will help us market and sell the bonds. And then once the bonds are sold and we receive the funding, they will be segregated in a separate fund where they're, we're able to report on the spending and any interest earnings that we earn while we're spending the money. So that's this issue tonight.
Kevin, thank you very much for your time tonight. Any questions for Kevin or Christina? Go ahead, member Ward.
So the market now is significantly different than the market was when we pulled the police bonds. But when we, when we issued the police bonds, we received a significant bond premium, which gave us some extra money that we didn't anticipate receiving. Is there any chance that that might occur with this particular bond sale?
We don't anticipate marketing them that way just because the ballot measure had an exact dollar amount in it. And it's a little fuzzy math if you go over that, in my opinion. So no, we don't anticipate a premium.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for members of council? Go ahead, member Russell.
I see in here that council has a fiduciary responsibility to make sure you all have done your job. So if you don't do your job, we could be in trouble. So I'm assuming that you're checking this all out. And I appreciate your response to member Ward's question.
And there are some specific parameters in the ordinance, so we're not allowed to go outside of those.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Member Wright.
Where's that tone?
Oh, I'm still laughing about member Russell's.
I'm, my question is about on upcoming neighborhood meetings and stuff. You couldn't get away, Christina. The door hangers for neighborhood meetings and stuff, how wide of an area is that? I quite often hear from people, I never heard, and they're a couple blocks away. So I'm wondering how big of an area do we go out from?
We typically will go a half mile to a mile around the park area because we want to hear from those neighbors specifically. But it's also going to be advertised on social media, on Inglewood Engaged. And so anybody's welcome to come to those public meetings. But we want to make sure we hit those neighbors that are very close to the park so they can give us their feedback.
And how big of a notice is it that those go, the door hangers specifically go out?
We'll typically do a minimum of two weeks. It could be up to three weeks in advance of the meetings. Like I said, we'll do multiple ways of advertising, but the door hangers, we try to get as close as possible so it's not lost or forgotten about.
Perfect. And I want to apologize, I should have said Director Underhill.
No problem.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Member Russell.
Thank you. And I have another question, mainly because somebody asked me to announce the, the Broadway Complete Streets thing. And so I went online and the, the online talking about the neighborhood meeting or the community meeting here, that in the mailer said, in the community room, on the website, it says Hamden Hall. I mean, so are we making sure that everything says the same thing?
That is our goal. And our goal, too, is to have the meetings actually at the park if the weather's right or at the facility. So yeah, that's, the goal is to have them at the park, but typically we'll be in the community room. And yes, we'll double, triple check the location, make sure it's accurate.
Okay, and so do, do we have any of the signs at the parks? Like, so we could put signs in the park, too, so the people that are visiting the park would see that information?
Yeah, we'll have signs that we can put up with a QR code that has, it'll take them to Inglewood Engaged. And then also on Inglewood Engaged, it'll have the meeting that'll be coming up for that particular park.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions from council? All right, seeing none, can I get a motion to approve 11A1, CB 17?
So moved.
Thank you, member Ward. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, member Pran. Any further comments on this? Seeing none, can we please vote?
Mayor Protam Anderson.
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp.
Aye.
Member Pran.
Aye.
Member Russell.
Aye.
Member Ward.
Aye.
Member Wright.
Aye.
Mayor Sierra.
Aye.
Let the record show seven aces.
Thank you very much, Kevin and Christina, for the presentation. Moving on to CB 9, 11B1. This is the PUD for 401 Inglewood Parkway. We have planner Will Charles again. Good evening, Will. I don't think there's anything new to add tonight, but any, anything you want to add from our previous discussion on this?
Yeah, I was just going to say I'm available, as well as the applicant team and members of the Development Review Team as well, to answer any questions you have. But that's it for me.
Great, Will. Thank you so much. Any questions for members of council? All right, seeing none, can I get a motion to approve 11B1?
Move to approve 11B1.
Thank you, member Pran. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, member Noonan Camp. Any further comments? I'll just voice it, so I will be voting yes on this planning unit development for, for the Kimco property. So thank you very much to Kimco for looking to invest in our community. The one thing I did want to bring up, just because I think it's been very important to this council, is that there's still a need for affordable housing and mid-market or middle-income housing within the area. And I know that, you know, one way that we're able to do this is just with, you know, with us being more of an infill community, that we are kind of expecting this as part of some of the developments that we have moving forward. And part of the reason why I'm bringing this up is that we did have a housing needs assessment done a couple of years back. And obviously, there's a bigger need for affordable housing within the area, but there's also a need for middle-market housing. So I don't want to take this too lightly. I know that there's, you know, additional development's going to be needed regardless. But I also want anyone that's going to be developing in the city to understand that we do have a shortage, especially around that 30 and 60% MI. We were, I believe, about 1,500 units short when we did this assessment back in 2022. For that specifically, middle income, I think we're a little bit closer to being even. But obviously, the needs around the entire city overall. I'm still a big fan of the plan that we see moving forward. And I know that we're going to have an affordable housing plan here put forth over the next year or so, well, within this year. But I just want every applicant to just understand how important it is for us to kind of fit in that missing piece that we happen to have within the city. We're doing well on the higher end, but I really want to see more of the affordable and middle-income housing come to fruition as well, so. But I'm a big fan of this plan overall. We'll be voting yes. So thank you very much, again, for investing in our community. Seeing no other comments, can we please vote?
Mayor Protam Anderson.
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp.
Aye.
Member Pran.
Aye.
Member Russell.
Nay.
Member Ward.
Aye.
Member Wright.
Nay.
Mayor Sierra.
Aye.
Let the record show five aces and two nays.
All right, thank you very much, everyone. We are now moving on to 11C1. This is the approval of 2025 City of Inglewood Strategic Plan. We have Deputy City Manager Tim Dodd, as well as Management Fellow Liz Ramsey.
Great, thank you, mayor. So I'm going to do a quick two-minute introduction while Liz comes to the podium, and then she and I are happy to take questions. So we didn't do a formal PowerPoint for this. We included instead the PowerPoint that we did your study session in your packet. What you see in front of you represents the last year of your strategic plan, as I think you're all aware. It includes the different goal modifications that you had and language modifications that you had from the council retreat in January. We also obviously had the check-in study session with you. We do recognize that there are some goal areas that are a bit light on projects. So if that's something you want us to address, we certainly can. Just quickly, in terms of how we developed projects, many of them are carryovers. I think we had roughly 70 or so projects that were not completed last year that were in the 2024 version of the plan that we carried over. Then we also worked with our director team and our management team and supervisor team of the city to identify, I guess I would say, department-level goals or projects that we've also included. We tried to include all the major initiatives that we were working on. Liz has also done a phenomenal job working with departments on developing performance metrics, as I think you're aware. This is the first official year where we've set targets for most of our metrics. There's still a few that were baseline if we didn't have enough data towards them. But for the most part, we've been able to develop targets with our departments using historical data and in some cases, using benchmark data from other cities across the country. So that's our brief overview tonight, but of course, we're happy to take any questions that you have.
Tim, thank you very much for that. Any questions from members of council? Go ahead, member Noonan Camp.
Thank you so much, both of you, for all of the hard work and the update. I have a couple of questions, or maybe one that's in a couple of different areas. I appreciate, especially in some of the new outcome areas or the, and the goals that we have asked to be included, seeing the project detail now, which is really helpful for us. But for an example, under safety, on the first one, increased citizen sense of community of safety, sense of community safety, the project is to do focus groups and surveys and to hear about what citizens want. I really like that as a first step to addressing this. But that's all of the intake of the information. It doesn't talk about then how that gets translated to the next step, which I wouldn't expect to have that outlined here because it'll depend on what the input is. But I also don't see it named that there will be a next step, and I see that as Q3. So how are you thinking about the completion of some of this? Or are you just thinking it's just input for this year and not actually an outcome? And then I see that in a couple of the projects as well. So I'm just thinking about like the life cycle of actually accomplishing this goal.
Yeah, I think it's a great point. I mean, I think it obviously depends, to use your terminology, the life cycle. I think with this one, not to say it's brand new, but I think it's one that is, it's survey-heavy, it's focus, it's data collection-heavy. So we want to, we obviously have a baseline, I guess I would say, from our national community survey. But we really want to be able to do a deeper dive. And we want to be able to look at the possibility of doing an additional survey, of collecting more information. The next step, of course, would be, you know, what does that information tell us in terms of the improvements that we want to make in terms of how we communicate police and public safety information to the public? We could certainly add that for this year. We don't have a timeline for that project. It will, it would be comprehensive, so it would take a considerable amount of time. And so I think the expectation, we probably wouldn't have final recommendations on how to move forward on that towards the end of the year, which is why you're not seeing action-oriented items. But we certainly could try to define a shorter timeframe, maybe by the end of quarter two, and then maybe add something that would, we'd probably have to keep it relatively general because it would likely be something that would look like the implementation based on those recommendations. But I hope that makes, makes sense as an answer.
It does, and I don't want to rush a process that should be thoughtful. And I'm balancing that with, I'm hoping that we can do something this year besides just listen. That's very, very important. Even if it's one strategy that we can implement before the end of the year, that feels like a reasonable expectation on something like this. And so I just want to make sure, especially in the purpose, where it says that the purpose is to inform strategies, to improve it, are, is the project actually capturing action? And I just want to make sure we're being thorough and setting a measurable goal, even if it's simply we want to identify the strategies by the end of the year or take one action. I just think it needs a little bit more than what I see currently.
Yeah, and we're, of course, happy to take amendments. I mean, possibly one could be, you know, for the last quarter, implement short-term recommendations that come out of survey data collection or something like that.
Sure. I don't think strategic planning is done. Sure. I don't think, uh, strategic planning is done best in an environment like this when we're throwing things out, so I would prefer to leave it as is, but for you to consider the feedback and to take it back with the department. And maybe when we do one of our quarterly updates, we could consider if you recommend any additional, uh, detail. But I really appreciate the work, but just wanted to give that reflection since it's a new one, so thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Member Noonan Camp. Member Russell, go ahead.
Thank you. So I would like to suggest something on the safety issue that, especially that first item, increased citizens' sense of community safety. And really, I think that the, the community survey really has listed out things that they don't feel safe about, and that might be one area to check out about specific things that we could do to address, um, I mean, because I, I've said this before, I don't want to just tell them, this is what we're doing to make them feel safe. I want to do things that will actually create a safe environment in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Russell. Anything else from members of council? All right, seeing none, can I get a motion to approve 11C1?
I moved to approve 11C1.
Thank you, Member Noonan Camp. Could I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Member Prang. Any further comments? All right, seeing none, can we please vote?
Mayor Pretim Anderson?
Aye.
Member Noonan Camp?
Aye.
Member Prang?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Member Ward?
Aye.
Member Wright?
Aye.
Mayor Sierra?
Aye.
Let the record show seven ayes.
All right, thank you very much, everyone. We're now moving on to mayor's choice. So first, just before I forget, uh, so next Monday, March 10th, um, in the community room, we will be holding, uh, a special meeting, since we will be having an executive session to discuss the city center redevelopment. Uh, study session will begin at 6:00, and the special meeting or the executive session will begin at the end of all the, uh, at the end of all the study session items, so that should be closer to 8:00 PM or 8:30 PM sometime around that time. So just wanted to make that clear for everyone. Um, secondly, um, this is an interesting one that I'm bringing forward to council, but, um, um, I apparently have the power to pardon people. It's, it's, it's pretty interesting. Uh, just found out about it with conversations with, uh, our city attorney Niles. Um, the reason why I'm bringing this up is that I'm potentially looking to use that pardon for a specific instance, and I want to seek guidance from this, from this body. So basically, the issue is that there's a constituent that bought a property within the city of Inglewood. Um, before he bought the property, it was owned by an investment company. Before that or after that, it was owned by a flipper. The, uh, the person that was trying to flip the property took out a, uh, a permit, did a bunch of work, or sorry, no. He did a lot of work without a permit, and, um, uh, what is that? A work stop order was issued by, uh, Community Development, and it stopped. The person that ended up buying the property that's in it today did some work on the property, uh, to live in the property, to be a, a part of Inglewood. Um, he went ahead and took out a permit, started doing work on it, and in order, and wanted to be issued a certificate of occupancy, uh, but was denied because there is still a $1,600 lien against this property. Um, the issue is, our code does not allow staff to waive that $1,600 fee. And so I've been speaking to the city attorney about this process, uh, trying to figure out ways to go about in handling this. He does have a meeting with the Board of Adjustment of, uh, of, uh, Adjustment and Appeals here in a couple of weeks. Um, but basically, yeah, there, there's a lien about against the property, and the cleanest way in order to get this gentleman out of this would be for me to issue the pardon. So I wanted to get feedback from members of council because it does seem like a, I, I don't like the fact that there isn't a way for staff to, uh, basically, uh, waive that fee that wasn't his responsibility, was done by somebody that owned the property a couple of times back. So I wanted to see from council because I just didn't want to, you know, lottery, just issue a pardon for this aspect or for this, uh, situation. So I wanted to seek guidance from you all to understand if you have any concerns with this, if there's any additional information that you need on this specific topic, but just wanted to let you know that I potentially am thinking about using a pardon on this piece. So, Member Wright, you first, and then Member Russell.
Um, I want to say thank you for bringing this to us, because you probably didn't have to. Um, I'm aware of this story. Um, I actually had, oddly, the flipper was here at one point speaking to council during public hearing for Title 16, and we just happened to talk to them. Don't know him, no personal connection at all. It's just an odd thing. Um, I personally don't think that somebody that buys a property should have to pay for the sins of the previous owner in something like this, so I fully support this. Um, I've heard this story through third parties, so everything that you just said is exactly what I have heard. Um, and I fully support this. This, I, I do not believe the pardoning has been abused. Um, and these are the rare instances that the mayor should have the authority to do something like this, and this is one of those times. So I fully, I fully support this, especially hearing this same exact story that you just told, so.
Thank you, Member Wright. Go ahead, Member Russell.
So the question that I have is, it's really not this person that is being pardoned. It is the property that has the, and, and it wasn't this person that created the purpose for the lien. Was it the previous property owner?
I think it was the owner two times back, if I remember correctly. Yeah, two times back, so it wasn't, it wasn't, yeah, two hundred before this owner.
So how did this person come to acquire the property?
It's a good question. I didn't get those type of details. City Attorney Niles, do you have any details on, on that?
Uh, yes, I spoke with the Building Division and Community Development to get background on this. Um, they advised that they had issued the stop work order posted on the property. Um, the owner at the time then sold it to a real estate investment company. Um, and then the real estate investment company sold it to the current owner, and the entire time, the, uh, stop work order was still, um, posted on the property.
But how did it get sold without the lien being negotiated? Is it because we didn't post it with the county?
I, I'm not sure if a lien has ever been filed, but it was assessed. Meaning, um, when we posted the stop work order, um, under municipal code, then to get the stop work order lifted, you have to pay for the permit and then a fee that's the same amount as the permit. So essentially, working without a permit means it imposes a, a penalty of the permit plus the permit fee. So when we posted the stop work order, that was, um, notice from the city that, um, the, the penalty has been assessed.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna let somebody else weigh in first.
Go ahead, Member Ward.
I'm not sure how far down the rabbit hole we want to go on this, but, uh, this is one of my constituents in District 4, uh, who lives not far from my own house. Uh, I've had a number of conversations with him, I've had conversations with staff, and obviously I've had a conversation with the mayor on this topic. Um, it, universally, we've come to the conclusion that the mayor's exercise of authority here is, is the best method for addressing the problem. Um, I, in particular, had a, had this conversation with my constituent where I told him, I've been very bullish on stop work notices. We've, we've put staff on notice that we expect them to enforce our laws in the city, and that's exactly what they're doing. I've also been bullish on another topic, which is not punishing the victim. And in this case, the current owner of the property is not the person who committed the offense. Uh, he purchased a property that did have a stop work notice in, in the window. Um, however, he pulled a permit to do the work that he has now completed, and it wasn't until after he pulled that permit and did the work that staff told him that he could not get the certificate of occupancy without paying the stop work fee. That seems wrong to me. Uh, I, I believe that it's likely that had he, uh, been informed of the stop work notice and the associated fine at the time that he pulled the permit, he, he likely would have paid it, or he would have challenged it at that time before he invested tens of thousands of dollars in properly completing the work that needed to be done to the property. Um, in this case, he intends to reside in this property. He's not flipping it to sell it to someone else. This is where he wants to live. Um, and, uh, I, I believe that it's justified, uh, in this case, to waive the stop work fine, which I would normally be quite aggressive at charging. Um, not only because it went through the entire transfer, property transfer and title process without this being noted as an encumbrance on the property, uh, but also because he was able to successfully pull a permit to perform the work without this being noticed. So this was a very unpleasant surprise for him when he went to get his certificate of occupancy. Um, he has filed with the Board of Adjustment and Appeals, and as part of this request, I will ask the mayor to order the refund of his $250 filing fee, uh, to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. As, uh, is within his authority, the mayor can, uh, order, um, under his pardon authority, the forgiveness of any applicable fine or criminal violation. There's no criminal matter here. This is all just, um, money that would otherwise be due to the city that I believe is inappropriate for us to charge this particular constituent. So that's the background information. If anybody has any questions, I'm fully informed on the situation. I can probably answer questions, um, that might be asked other than the ones that the city attorney has already answered.
All right, anything else? Go ahead, Member Russell.
Okay, I, I am not opposed to this, but what I, what is very frustrating to me is why we haven't followed through as the city to ever let it get to this point. I mean, they, we missed it as the city when we looked for it. Until he went to, um, get it at the end, how did we miss it before on those two times? And if it would have been registered with the county? I mean, have we missed something as the city in the process of all of this?
So, if I may, I, I think potentially yes, but I think the mayor was also trying to be discreet by not addressing that directly from the dais. Um, and, and I, I support that decision. I, in, in a case where we have a stop work, I don't think it's necessarily appropriate to lien the property because the penalty is supposed to be levied when the permit is pulled. Um, so, um, it's an encumbrance on the permit. Um, and I have only my constituent's word to support the story that I just told you, but I have not heard anything from staff that would indicate that anything happened other than the way he told me. Um, nor, I mean, he was successfully able to pull a permit, and now they're going after the money, which to me indicates that they didn't ask for the money when he pulled the permit in the first place.
And, and I, I appreciate that, and, and I want to do what's best for this individual, but is there something that we may need to address in the change in process of how things are done? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Russell. Anyone else? Member Noonan Camp?
I'll weigh in. This obviously sounds like a very frustrating situation. No one wants to be in a situation where you purchase a property and you miss that there is something connected to the property that, um, is now your responsibility. And, uh, in concept, I, I support, uh, addressing this situation for this individual. My only concern with using the pardon at this point in the process is that this might not be the only individual in the city of Inglewood who has something like this or who inherited a fee from a previous, uh, bill, uh, property owner. And I'm a little bit concerned about the precedent, especially since we don't use pardons often. It feels like potentially a, a bold move. Um, and we do actually have a process that can deal with this, my understanding, is through the Board of Adjustments and Appeals process. And so that's why this exists. You can go and you can appeal your case and say, hey, this is unfair. Um, I wonder if there's an opportunity maybe for the city council to send a letter to the board that to be read in the hearing and say, you know, we would like to see this fee removed, we would support that, so that this individual can receive, um, uh, I don't know, resolution through that process. And then if, uh, the Board of Adjustment and Appeals does not remove the fee, then I would consider the pardon. But I'm hesitant to use the pardon before the citizen has exhausted the proper channels because it does feel a little bit premature in my initial understanding. I've not been as close to it as some of the other council members. Um, so I'm not opposed to this in concept, but maybe after we have a Board of Adjustment and Appeals decision, considering that he's already filed there, so that would be my preference.
Go ahead, Member Ward.
Yeah, I, I would, that would probably be my reaction under normal circumstances as well, and I appreciate that feedback. One of the issues here is that the staff directive and the way the code reads, staff will testify at the Board of Adjustment and Appeals hearing against waiving the fee. And then I, as a council member and the representative of my constituent, am obligated to go in front of the Board of Adjustment and Appeals on his behalf and tell them, under my authority as a council member, um, or under the auspices of my authority as a council member, that I do not support charging this fee, and that I do not believe that this is the reason why the code was written, uh, to assess the fee. Um, the Board of Adjustment and Appeals has some discretionary authority there, and under our city code, the mayor has discretionary authority. The other issue is that there's a timeline involved here. The, this man has successfully completed all of the work, and he's attempting to occupy his residence by obtaining a certificate of occupancy, which he cannot get until this process is completed. Uh, if the mayor makes this choice tonight, uh, the certificate of occupancy can be issued tomorrow. Um, so, or presumably tomorrow, assuming staff has the ability to issue it, um, immediately. Um, so I, I am sensitive to what you're saying, and I believe that that's probably a good process, but I also believe that this is exactly the puzzle piece that fits into the exception that is designed under the mayor's pardon power. Uh, there are times when applying the rule of law exactly as the code is written does not fit the needs of the community, and I think this is an example of one of those types.
Mayor Pretem, before we get to you, City Attorney Niles, is there anything else you want to add on that? Because I know that we've been talking about this at length, about other options in terms of not using the pardon, but anything that you want to add regarding what Mayor Pret, or excuse me, Member Ward just stated?
Uh, no, I don't have anything to add. Um, if, if a mayor does decide to exercise this pardon power, I will, uh, let city staff know tonight to process the return of the, any fees paid that, that are ordered returned to cancel and to cancel the BOAA hearing.
Thank you very much. City Attorney Niles, Mayor Pretem.
Uh, just wanted to weigh in in support of, of the pardon in this circumstance. I think the, the facts here are compelling enough to me to think it warrants this.
All right, anyone else? All right, well, I appreciate everyone with the, um, yeah, with just their comments regarding this issue. Uh, my intention is to issue the pardon, or at least a direct, uh, terminal, as I do plan on issuing the pardon for this individual, so we'll start the paperwork and, and go down that route, so.
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. May I ask a question? The code reads that you have to inform council when you have issued the pardon, so if you intend to do that tonight, I would suggest, just stating that you have done.
Well, there you go. Well, thanks for reading the code. So, uh, yeah, my intention is to issue the pardon tonight for the individual, um, that we've speaking of. I don't have his name in front of me at the moment, but I will be issuing the pardon for this specific case of, um, the work stop order that he is now being charged of $1,600 lien that is of no fault of his own, so. All right, anyone else regarding council members' choice? Go ahead, Member Prang.
Thank you. Um, I have a question resulting from our study session and the presentation that we had from Inglewood Arts. Um, and there was a question asked by Member Russell that I added to in, uh, making a request for the list of users of the space, uh, both those that pay and potentially use the space for free. I just wasn't sure if that was received as a formal council request or if it needs to be made formal. It's my understanding that the same request was made last year, and we never received that information. And for me, that's important information to have before we take our next step.
Yeah, so I think it's, is, since we did not receive it last year, then we do need to get that as a council request to make sure that we receive that information because I actually do agree with you. I want to see the names of the recipients that have been using, at least for your specific, well, I, I think just overall, anyone that's using the space, I would like to have a name for them, uh, regardless of whether it was free or not, but we will issue a council request if it hasn't been issued at this point.
Okay.
Uh, to get the information that was requested last week.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for bringing it up, um, Member Prang. Um, all right, we'll go down to Member Ward and then Member Wright.
I just wanted some clarification on what Member Prang just offered. My recollection from last year's discussion was that the, the rentals should be public records, so anyone who asked for them would get them, but I don't recall this council actually asking for them directly. Um, I could be wrong on that, but.
I believe Member Russell asked for it last year.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I agree. I believe it was Member Russell that asked for it last year. Uh, Member Wright?
Thank you. Um, this is for City Attorney Niles. It's our night. Um, my question is, who asked the questions regarding the direct-elect mayor? And, um, are we going to make that public, um, the information? Possibly, could we have a study session, since I believe it was 82% of the voters wanted, voted for elected a mayor?
Uh, which, which specific, specific question? Which specific questions regarding direct-elect mayor?
Well, the email that you had sent us to council.
Because I'm working on a lot of direct-elect mayor questions right now.
It was the communication you sent us, I believe, the end of last week? So you...in the email, it references you've had a lot of inquiries, so I'm curious on who the inquiries came from.
Oh, I didn't note that. I just made a list of all the questions that came in. I'm also producing another mayor directly to council on different options regarding a majority vote for a direct-elect mayor, and that's...you should receive that by the end of the week, before your study session on it.
Okay, so it says the city attorney's office has received several inquiries regarding the process specifically. And then there's multiple statements under it. So I'm curious as to who sent the inquiries.
Yeah, I just kept a...I'm sorry, I kept a list of the questions. I know City Manager Sean Lewis and I discussed that, about which position, and he had received some questions about who's up for reelection or which position has changed. And he and I had discussed it at our weekly meeting, and then we discussed, this should probably be information produced to council. I know I discussed it with several council members as well, but I didn't list who I'd specifically discuss that with and who I received questions from. And I can't tell you who the city manager received the questions from either.
Okay, and then we are going to have a study session to go over all this, so the public understands this whole process thing.
Yes. So the city clerk's office has a study session scheduled later in this month. And then again, I'm producing another memo on potential runoff options or primary options as well for that election.
Okay, so I'm not interested in the ranked choice voting. I'm sorry if I'm not making mine. It's the process on the elected mayor position, on who can, who can't, those questions that came in that you answered last week.
Oh, you wanted a study session on the memo that I produced?
Correct. That's what I'm asking about.
Okay. I don't have one scheduled. I just produced that in the memo format, but I'm happy to present that publicly.
Okay, because I'm getting a lot of questions, and that's what I was asking about, who was inquiring about that. Because I've received a lot of questions. I'm sure others are asking a lot of questions, so.
And I know the city manager has received questions too, because he brought it up to me.
Okay, so we all may be getting a lot of questions.
I ask a question. So was there an intention to have a study session regarding the specific item?
No. I had just produced that to city council so that you could then answer questions that you received.
So then let me ask members of council just to make sure that this body wants to have a study session on the topic, but do we want to have a study session regarding the process and the items that were outlined regarding City Attorney Niles' direct mayor election and that entire process? Go ahead, Member Noonan Camp.
Is there a specific action that we need to take to enable the will of the voters for this?
No.
Okay.
And I'm happy to just discuss it now. In the November election, there will be three positions up for election. An at-large position was replaced with what will be a direct-elect mayor position. And so that will be a new election for us. And then we also have two council positions that will be elected in the November election, District Two, which is currently held by Councilmember Noonan Camp, and District Four, currently held by Councilmember Ward. So there won't be an at-large position, because that's the one that the directly-elect mayor position will assume. And then we had some questions about term limits, that if someone is term limited to serve as a city council member, can they be elected to serve as mayor? And yes, those are two different positions, mayor and council member. So any terms, years of service or term limit that may apply to a city council member will not apply to the mayor position.
Great, thank you. Considering that council doesn't need to take any action to enable this, I don't think I need a study session for it. I would prefer to continue to read the attorneys, the city attorneys' memos, and then have a meeting with her if I have more questions. But I do think we should be providing information to the citizens, since they voted for this, on the next steps and what they can be anticipating, which I'm sure is probably in a plan somewhere, and will be going out when we talk about election information, especially maybe in a citizen magazine or something. I think that's a great idea, to let the citizens know. But I don't think that a study session is the best way to communicate with the citizens, so I would rather do that in a different way.
Thank you very much, Member Noonan Camp. Anyone else? Or a Member Wright?
I guess my view is, any way we can be transparent. If we could post this on the website somewhere and say, this is how it works now, since we have a direct-elect mayor, you know, it will be this at-large position that will now become the direct-elect mayor, who could be direct-elect mayor because of these questions, term limits, and that type of thing. As transparent as we could be and get that communication rolling now, so that we don't have questions come October, and people yelling at us saying, hey, you weren't talking to us, is what I'm looking for. So if the information that you sent to us, to those questions, if we can give that to, you know, the voters, and you're okay with that, I'm okay with that also. So I think the more we start communicating now, the happier I'd be. And if this council agrees, you know, that's where I sit.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Member Wright, Member Prang?
Thank you. Just to weigh in on that, I'm not necessarily adverse to having a study session on this, even though there's not really decision-making needed around it, but it is new to the city. And I don't think that it would be hurtful or a waste of time to have a dialogue, you know, that's recorded for the public, just laying out what the process looks like, what the term limits are, et cetera, as an additional way to communicate it out to the community. I mean, as many ways as we can have clarity around that as possible, I think is beneficial. So I'm not adverse to a study session on it.
Anyone else want to weigh in? I'll hold off on the study session right now, but I think what is important, though, is I think this should be in the Inglewood Magazine coming up. So we're currently in the, what, the spring issue? So the next one is going to be the summer issue, which would be released in May. If we miss this one, then it won't get released until August, which may be a little bit later. You're really getting to the end stage of actually declaring for mayor. So, City Attorney Niles, I don't know if you speak to communications about this specific topic, but just getting something in the next citizen would make sense.
I believe they're already planning for that.
There we go. There we go. All right, cool.
And I did just send an excerpt of my memo to the communications director to make sure that it's included. And I specifically requested the next magazine and other citizen informational campaign.
Yeah, okay, perfect. I'm not adverse to speaking about this item again here in the coming months about a study session, though, so. Go ahead, Member Wright.
And just a suggestion or a question for City Attorney. You were mentioning that the runoff and other things we'll be discussing, could it just be brought up and added during that time? I mean, how much more time would it add during that study session?
Yes, we'd be happy to insert a slide on that. That's no problem.
Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah, I was going to say, it was like, I'm probably, organically, it's probably going to come up as part of that conversation.
Right, so, you know, if she's prepared for it.
Just make it clear that that's going to be added, and that's going to be discussed as part of that study session.
Right. I mean, it's...I'm all for transparency, so. All right, thank you.
Member Wright. Member Russell, go ahead.
I just have an announcement for those people probably that watch the video. I'm having a town hall meeting this coming Thursday evening here in the second-floor community room, and from 7:00 to 8:30. So I'd be happy for all of you to come out. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Russell. Anyone else? Go ahead, Member Ward.
I just have one brief item. Sometimes folks are a little perplexed at why I would use member's choice to respond to something that was said during public comment. That is because if it's not my turn to give the response to public comment, I don't believe that it's appropriate for me to give response to public comment during that timeframe. So Mr. Kozak, one of my constituents, came here tonight and talked about the receiving towers for water going on top of our schools, and sent us some resources regarding the effect of cell towers on top of schools. Cell towers transmit and receive data. What we are putting on top of the schools is simply designed to receive radio communication signals that are already in the air. So we're not transmitting anything from our schools. We're not exposing our schoolchildren to any RF radiation that isn't already in the air from the radio stations that you listen to when you're driving your car, to the cellphone that you keep in your pocket, to anything else that transmits a signal by radio. So the alarmism over putting cell towers on top of schools is not appropriate, because that is not what we are actually doing. And that's all I wanted to offer.
Thank you, Member Ward. All right, moving on to City Manager's report. Tim.
Great, thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. First, you probably just got an email. We did actually get an email from Mr. Bertolucci at Inglewood Arts last Wednesday, just a few days after the meeting with the data that was requested. So I did send it to council now. We're happy to enter it as a formal council request as well. We were going to put it in the council folder this week, and we will be bringing it back for your consideration of approval of the contract amendment, probably the first meeting in April, on April 7th. But you do have that data now from Inglewood Arts in your email box. The second one is, and this is a topic some council members have brought up, so just so you're aware of it, we do two emergency management internal tabletop trainings each year. The next one is scheduled, we scheduled it last week for May 13th, and it's going to focus on a stormwater event in the city. This is one that city staff's actually going to be running with council, oh, sorry, with county support, so it'll be a great learning opportunity for staff involved. And then I also wanted to share with council a program that's in development called Adopt a Spot and Adopt a Garden. This program will launch this spring, so I just wanted to give you a heads up about it. This is a program that, there's several best practices and programs around the country. And it's basically, there has been an informal garden program here, but like any goal set by a community, the city is an actor, obviously, a major actor in beautification, but it's something that we also want to encourage all of our community members to be a part of. It does tie into the strategic plan, actually, in several places, but most notably, the Neighborhood Aesthetics Goal under Community Well-being. Staff has done quite a bit of work on this already. We've identified a list of locations for adoption for either the garden or spot program. The spot program's probably more cleanup, and the city's Data Analytics Division is finalizing a map that will be posted online sometime in May, early May most likely, that members of the community can utilize to adopt a spot or a garden. Spots will be on city-owned property, but they won't include medians for obvious safety reasons, but they'll likely be in portions of parks and other areas such as that. Any individual or group, such as boy scouts, girl scouts, a church, a school group, a group of coworkers, et cetera, can adopt a spot or garden. Those that adopt a spotted garden will receive the needed materials, as well as an orientation, as well as a sign saying that they adopted it. And again, we're still finalizing this, so I'm sure Manager Lewis will be sharing more information about it with you, but we do hope to launch it in May. So I just wanted to give you a heads up about that.
Thank you so much, Tim. Anything else?
That's it.
All right, and with that, everyone, we are now adjourned. It is before 9:00 PM. Everyone, have a great evening. Thank you.